All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Chairman's announcements, the only thing that I do have this evening is I would like to observe a moment of silence for the 13 servicemen killed in Kabul, Afghanistan on the 26th. And if the folks in the room will indulge me, I'd like to read down through the names of the 13 servicemen that their lives were taken that day. The first one is Marine Corps Staff Sergeant Darren T. Hoover, 31 years old, from Salt Lake City, Utah. Second is Marine Corps Sergeant Johani Rosario Picardo, 25, from Lawrence, Massachusetts. Marine Corps Sergeant Nicole L. Gee, 23, from Indio, California. Marine Corps Corporal Hunter Lopez, 22, of Indio, California. Marine Corps Corporal Deegan W. Page, 23, from Omaha, Nebraska. Marine Corps Corporal Humberto A. Sanchez, 22, from Logan's Port, Indiana. Marine Corps Lance Corporal David L. Espinoza, 20, from Rio Bravo, Texas. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Jared M. Schmitz, 20, from Charles, Missouri. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Riley J. McCollum, 20, from Jackson, Wyoming. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Dylan R. Marola, 20, from Ranch Kukamunga, California. Marine Corps Lance Corporal Kareem M. Nikoy, 20, from Norco, California. Navy Corpsman Maxton W. Soviak, 22, from Berlin Heights, Ohio. An Army Staff Sergeant Ryan C. Nos, 23, from Cort in Tennessee. With all that being said, God bless those soldiers and their families. Is there anybody here for anything that's not currently on our agenda this evening?
May I approach?
Yes.
Thank you for you, Mr. Chair. So on Saturday, we're having a rained-out concert that's being played to finish our concert series, Rolling Stones, Creedence Clearwater at the Farm. And we are having a memorial to the 9/11, 20th anniversary ahead of that. So for two months, I've been working hard, and the chiefs have tried to help get me an honor guard. We have a bugler, we have everything else in place, the National Anthem and all that. And lacking any minute, if I can get an honor guard, I wouldn't need flags. So I would like to ask if the farm, and myself being the one that would be responsible, I'd wrap them up in polyethylene gear, I'd take the tops off because I know about these generally, the top should come off so you don't break them, and transport them to the farm, and I would transport them back here, not delaying any time that the town hall is open. That's what I'm asking for, since two months ago, I had an honor guard, then I didn't, and then it's been back and forth, and everybody's got things going on in the morning, and they don't want to do two, and whatever, and so it would be nice to put them on the pavilion there for the memorial that we have ahead of this. And this is, you may have seen these posters. It's not germane to the, you know, probably everything, but this is, you know, we worked hard to put this together, and it's everywhere generally. And I'm looking just for these two flags because they are very beautiful.
So I guess here's my question on it. And the whole 9/11 thing is kind of personal to me. I lost a couple of people that I served with on that day. I guess my first question is, is as part of the 9/11 memorial, will you be donating proceeds from the evening to the 9/11 fund?
We do that. It wasn't, we're trying to keep the farm alive and do things there for the public, but certainly if you're asking for some money for that, I can, I would take it out of my personal pocket, I would take it out of the farm proceeds. But again, let's see how we do. If we can get 400 people, certainly don't have a problem. I end up with 100, then I might lose money on the band, but that's the way the whole, all these concert series go. And it's just for the people that are there to recognize, stand up, National Anthem. We have a bugler that we're paying to do taps in a moment of silence. We have police officers coming, we do have some fire coming to stand with us, and it's basically a reflection on the people that have passed and also the heroes that were made during that day.
So there are the towns' flags, and this doesn't, there's two, right? So you take them, you'll take care of them, and?
I'll wrap them up right here in a brand-new poly.
And in turn, you return them the following Monday or so. I don't see a particular problem with that. I think it might contribute to your event. I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, and I did not serve in any military standpoint, but I think, you know, I've been a good citizen, and not only, I think good citizens can do good things too, it doesn't have to be somebody military.
I don't deny that at all, and I don't take it lightly. It's just one of those things, it's very, it's close to me. I have, and it's my personal views, is I have a problem with any event utilizing 9/11 and then any kind of for-profit that goes with it.
This is to make the people in the audience reflect on it, that we have anyway, whether we had the event or not. And it makes them stand up, pledge allegiance, take a moment, think about what happened, and that's my take on it. We're not going to make any more money or less money if we do it, I just think it's the right thing to do.
I, I'll let the other members share it too, Kevin, but since you looked at me, I don't, this isn't, my understanding was different than what's being presented today. What he's looking to do is recognize September 11th on an event that had already been established. The flags are probably difficult to come by, and that these are here. The NFL, the NCAA, all of, all, I mean, shoot, the NFL will have flyovers and things, right? So to me, it's not that egregious to contribute to an event that's existing by presenting the colors that the townspeople own to an event, knowing that they'll be back, you know, probably less than 48 hours.
I think any thought of the, what events that transpired on that day is worthwhile for people to come back to in their, in their minds. So even if it's part of another event, it's, I mean, it's timely, obviously this time of year, it's the 20th anniversary coming up, so I would, if you're making a motion, you made a motion?
I'd like to comment before you make a motion. I understand where Kevin's coming from. I as well know somebody that was lost in that event that happened 20 years ago. You have mixed emotions when you have, when you're that close to it, when it's associated with something that's commercial. It's like during, during our election, Hal, somebody swiped my sign, Hal's sign on the previous year, and put them on the town common, that's just a no-no zone, because it's up there on the monument. I don't know what to feel on this, to be honest with you, only because of knowing somebody that was actually in there, and I'm not.
And we all do. We all, everybody, it feels.
I knew one person, Kevin knew three people that was in that, I believe that's correct. It's a very tough situation.
You know what?
I remember it like.
I don't want to tread on it.
No, 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 and I'm not trying to, I'm just giving you an honest opinion, Aaron, I'm not trying to say anything negative to you, I'm just trying to explain. And I don't know if Hal or Tim knew of anybody in there, but I could tell by Kevin's emotions where he was coming from. And anybody that knows me, I don't normally speak in this tone voice, it's a difficult situation to even be in.
We all cry over this, you know, so.
But at the same time, I think it should be recognized. So it's, you got mixed emotions on the whole process, for me anyways.
If the rest of the board is amenable to loaning out the town flags to it, I'm certainly not going to stand in the way of it. I would respectfully ask that if a donation could be made to the 9/11 fund, I would appreciate it. That's kind of where I sit with it.
And I agree with that. I'm fine, I'm fine either way. I'm just trying to explain my view on the whole thing and picking up on his emotion of the whole process.
And I understand the ask for that. My goal is to provide for this farm in the origin to survive, thrive, provide a place, a safe place. Last year during COVID, we had 8,000 visitors last year. People felt so safe there, and we've made something of that, was a distressed property, and to rent the sign, rent these out in a way, because now we've got to make a donation, which, hey, it's an honest, good thing. It just feels like we're playing against the other there. I would think we'd say, the farm, go for it, putting it into it, you know, like that, instead of, you know, make a donation, sort of rent them to you.
I don't think that's what Kevin said.
No, I know.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I don't think that's what he said. He said he would appreciate it if it was at all possible that you could make a donation. He is in no way telling you that you're obligated to make a donation.
No, I never came across that way at all. Any other point?
Yeah, I think that the farm itself is a, you know, tremendous draw to the people of Douglas and providing entertainment and things, and apple picking and all of those things. And it was in hard times till he came in and did that, so it's, it's a nice feature to have in the town.
Yep, and nobody's disputing that at all. It was just the emotional attachment to this particular event is all it is.
The 20th anniversary Douglas High School reunion is going to be the farm at that date, at the reunion. They're going to be there at the, we're hosting them, so.
If you want to entertain somebody in the back, I would say, if you wanted to entertain somebody in the back or not.
Just hand it up.
Yeah.
Mr. Tim?
Yes, Shirley.
Shirley Misinski, 60 Oak Street in Douglas. I hear what you're all saying, that having been a select person, I think you all have to ask yourself the question, would I do this for anyone else or everyone else that asks to do the same thing?
Probably yes.
I can't speak for everybody else up here, Shirley, but I can say, if any business owner or private resident for any kind of an event, especially circling around 9/11, asked if they could have temporary use of the flags used at town hall, they'd be met with the exact same thing that Mr. Sokrat was, is I would ask respectfully, make a donation to the 9/11 fund, but that's certainly not going to impede my ability to do it. At the end of the day, we serve the taxpayers, they're their flags, he's a taxpayer, if he's asking to use it, that's how I see it.
And with all things being equal, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change my opinion either way, no matter who it was.
Yep. So if anybody wants to make a motion on it, I would be happy to entertain it.
I'll move that we approve the use of the flags as presented to the board tonight, and hopefully we'll receive some sort of a donation as well as part of it.
We do, we do. I don't, I don't want him to feel like.
He has to.
Strongly army him into making a donation. It was only a suggestion, that's all it was.
I'm going to personally make it, not the farm, I'll personally do that.
I'll second.
Okay. So the motion's been made to allow use of the flags to Mr. Sokrat for the farm for the September 11th, and been seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you so much, I appreciate the conversation, it's really important. I'll take those posters back if you don't mind, unless you want to, just for another couple days, maybe draw a few more people to reflect. Thank you so much, I'll coordinate with Matt.
All right, so we're at the first agenda item, which is a hearing for Pine Stand and Stone, One Lackey Dam Road, amended propane license application, and possible votes.
Hey, Mr. Paul Delio from Delio Gas, located 55 Western Street in Grafton, Mass. Here representing Telphonade Concrete and Pine Stand and Gravel, in terms of a flammable storage, flammable storage permit from the town, for a total of 7,000 gallons of propane used to heat water and heat their facilities.
Is this just a renewal of what the?
I think it's a new application.
It's a new application.
Yes, chief.
This license, this is a license, the license stays with the land, but the land sells or not. And they're amending the license to increase 4,000 gallons of propane from 3,000 that was there previously to 7,000. So there'll be, they already have 3,000 on site at another hopper, there'll be another 4,000 gallons, or four tanks will be added. Myself and Assistant Chief Manning went out and surveyed the property, looked at where they're going to go, talked about the necessary safety precautions, all that stuff is in place, so I fully support it.
That goes a long way.
Yep.
It is a public hearing, did we?
I have a question.
Oh, we never opened it.
Yeah, let's open that.
Oh, is it open?
No, we haven't opened the hearing. I jumped the gun. I'm bad.
Yeah, not real bad, just a little bad.
Just a little teeny.
Moderately bad.
Anybody want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Your question was? Thank you, Tim.
I have a question for the chief. Are they going to be located all in the same area, or is there three in one area and four in the other?
One that has 3,000 at the hopper that's presently there, they're in the process of building another hopper, and that will be, that will have four tanks.
Yep.
Four 1,000 gallon tanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions from anybody? Seems pretty straightforward, and.
Mr. Chair, I did forget to mention, by mass general law, there has to be a license and a permit. So the permit would be a separate thing that I would initiate and fight about.
Excellent. I figure since the guy that'd have to be there if it blows up is okay with it, I think we should be too.
Yeah, I mean, you look at the application, the word flammable is prevalent.
Yep.
And if the fire chief is comfortable, I am too.
Anybody wish to make a motion on this?
We should close, check to see if there's other people.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak against or for the license in the public hearing? Thank you.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Anybody wish to make a motion on the license?
I move to approve the licensing request, license request as presented to the board.
Will second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you.
It usually does help when, I have to go put this fire out, he's like, yeah, I'm all good with that. All right, so we have the road use Midstate Massive Ultra Trail Race from 10-9 to 10-10 in possible votes. Is there anyone here to, is it massive or ultra? Or is it both massive and ultra?
It is a massive ultra. He ran 100 miles from New Hampshire to Lake Wallow.
Where's it start in New Hampshire?
At Windblom Cross Country Steer.
All the way to Wallow Lake?
Seven miles north of the border.
You running on this one, Tim?
I'm not.
No. All right. And have you already been in touch with police, fire, EMS, and highway regarding details?
I believe we have, we're only on Northwest Main Street for about a quarter mile before entering the trail at Lake Shore Drive. And then we cross Route 16 on the Midstate Trail, and we'll have signage stating runners crossing the road and going in both directions. We are also working with DCR, who has requested that we request an ambulance on site at Lake Wallow for the runners, just in case as a precautionary measure. And we have obtained the certificate of insurance for the town, et cetera, and all that.
All right, so DCR, would we be able to accommodate the ambulance request and have staffing for a second ambulance to handle all the in-town stuff?
I will send you that email.
All right. You sure you don't want to run on this, Tim?
That's too far for me.
That's too far. How about you, Hal?
No thanks. No? Next year.
Next year?
I'll be in shape then.
Come on down to the finish and cheer on the runners as they cross the finish line, they love it.
Who was Rosie Reyes, is that the one that went into the Boston Marathon and joined in what, the last mile?
I missed the, I missed the part about crossing Route 16. I, it's a Saturday, Sunday, you know, 16 can get, can get busy. I would, has the fire, the police chief?
Sorry, the audio broke up a little bit there from the person speaking.
There was just a concern, you had mentioned you were crossing Route 16, that's, you know, can be a, and I'm not exactly certain I know where you are crossing.
Yeah, this, we, we have an aid station in the parking lot at that area, and the runners are very infrequent. We have a volunteer station, just to highlight that there are, that there's a road crossing there. I think we haven't had any issues or any responded feedback for runners at that intersection. And we do put reflective signage up facing both directions, about a quarter mile from the crossing that says runners on the road.
I mean, would it make sense just to have it, have the chief put a detail there?
Well, I don't.
Because 16 gets crazy.
I think it makes sense to let the chief sign off on what he needs.
Yeah.
Okay, that's Columbus Day weekend.
Right.
All right, so we'll wait for, we can do a approval with like contingency on, or just base whatever the chief's recommendations are, ask that they accommodate.
Right.
Is that fair?
What was the question, sorry?
So we'd probably look at approving this, but we would ask that the, that you reach out with the police chief, kind of run it across him, and then whatever accommodations he feels would be appropriate, just kind of comply with those.
Perfect, no problem.
All right, well, anything else?
I don't have any.
I'll make a motion that we allow the road use requests for Saturday, October 9th, and Sunday, October 10th, contingent upon acting on the recommendations, if any, from both the fire and police chiefs in our town, and wish you the best of luck.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Man Eric?
How long are the Cedar Street signs on 16 to be in place? What I'm thinking, can they be used to move further, closer to the crossing, to announce drivers to slow down?
It's going to be, the room be in place 88 days.
They have to be in place 88 days.
That's how long it's going to take for the bridge to go, so if we're using the Cedar Street Bridge signs, using those for the next three months.
Yeah, so we can't move those?
I don't think so.
The bridge will be closed, nobody will use it, you can use those signs for one day as an extra precaution.
Maybe we go on Tim's motion with the.
Yeah, well.
From the police and fire.
Exactly, John Fronell, and ask if that's a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's probably one of the things that I would assume that the police chief would look into as well, and talk to John, and he usually circles up with highway to see if there's any recommendations from there, but, good point.
I always include all departments after these get approved that they need to reach out to.
Oh, okay. And leases all over, with no typos.
Not yet, not done right yet.
Sword is over.
All right. I had to. All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion now? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
All right, well, again, good luck, thank you for thinking of our little beautiful town.
Thanks, you too.
All right, so that brings us to Oktoberfest, and the special one-day liquor license for 10-2, 10-221 in possible votes. And we have Mr. St. Pierre, who is the chair of the Oktoberfest committee.
We've done, this is the fourth, fourth time that we've done a beer. It's nice, price addition.
It seems to get better every year, too. You increasing the size at all, or just pretty much same footprint, same size, same everything as last year?
It's the same. It'll be used in purgatory brewing out of Dogfish.
It cuts down on the planning side to it. I don't have any objection to it. Is anybody?
None here.
Anybody here in the audience? None?
I move approval of the request for one-day liquor license for Oktoberfest.
Second. One note, as I know Suzanne usually did those for two days? Two or three days?
The day before, the day of.
And the day after. Yeah.
To get the beer, and then offload it again on the day after, so they can get it, use it, and then get rid of it again.
So it's three days we need then?
It is, three days.
Okay, and then, since it hasn't been seconded, I restate my motion that it be a three-day liquor and entertainment license.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, which brings us to item number four, Whiteman'sville Fishing Game Special One-Day Liquor and Entertainment License in Possible Votes. I am a member of the Whiteman'sville Fishing Game. I have to recuse myself from this part of the meeting, and I will turn it over to Mr. Borman to run.
That's right. All right.
Should be a three-day.
Cut me that, man.
And you knew all the rules.
All right. Did we have any representative from the Whiteman'sville Fishing Game here?
Hi.
Come on up.
Chairman of Board of Directors, you see right up there. Oh, thank you. Paul Bootyette, chairman of the Board of Directors, Whiteman'sville Fishing Game. We have an annual field day, which we didn't have last year, of course, with the epidemic. We're back, hopefully back in business and having another field day. It's a family fun day, but we do have a small bar set up, a setup that handles the crowd. Not a real big crowd, usually 100 people or less, and that includes kids, so we're going to, coming back for our same license we got two years ago, basically. It's a one-day license, September 18th.
Should we make it the three-day thing, as we did in the last one?
No, we.
It's, it is a one-day permit, they're only used.
Right, and you're already set up.
Correct.
But they have a bar license.
Yeah.
We have a bar license now.
Just for yelsoy juice, right?
Actually, I'm a little confused as to why we need a one day, because we have a license for the premises now.
So that's probably for inside?
Because it's for outside.
The one they have now, and you're going to have that outside bar.
Well, there must be specifics to that. So we're getting the one-day license for the pavilion, which.
But they set up a break down in one day.
Those three days at the end.
Well, yes, because you, you also can't use stock from inside.
I understand. We have a separate purchase for that, and then we dispose of it afterwards.
So it would be three days with that one as well?
Crazy rules.
It is, but it's still the one-day permit, yes, but the length would be total of three days.
We pour on only one day.
Correct.
And we've done this before, I think I remember really considering this, and, you know, after the event, there was really nothing to talk about, so.
I've been to it a few years ago, it's just a family fun day, nobody's getting pours.
Yeah.
It's just a fun day.
Well controlled.
Yeah.
I don't drink myself, so I'm a policeman.
Very good.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right. Having the motion and it being seconded, I'll ask any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just like that.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great night.
Good luck to you and enjoy the night.
My pleasure.
Sir, if you could send the chairman in?
He's the one with the cigarette.
He's released from purgatory now.
What? I was just trying to help.
You sure you guys want me back?
Well, it was a split vote. We were like deadlock, so we had to take...
Glad you're back.
All right.
Believe that with three people.
It's one to one with an extension.
Nice. All right. So, we're on to the planning board and Les Stevens review warrant items for STM and possible votes. Hello, Les.
So, the planning board, so the planning board back in probably last September into probably December took up, I think we looked at six different things that came across our board. One of them was the accessory apartments, which I think we're going to try for the spring to kind of clean up that. That's just been more of a nuisance going through the accessory power and renewal process. So, what we ended up doing was we cut the articles down. Discussion, back and forth, planning board as well. At the time, town engineer Bill Kondiff was there. We had these articles ready for the spring, and then we kind of lost line of sight with the staffing turnover and things like that. So, articles are pretty straightforward. A lot of them are applicants that came before us with second articles really related to, I think it's Caswell Court. And we realized that nobody could have 200 feet of frontage in a VR zone to be back to, for a reduced lot frontage being that far back, because then the setback is only 50 feet. So, we're trying to look at kind of updating the bylaws and make some corrections there. And then the other article is around the highway bounds. The highway bounds was, it's kind of been a pet project of the planning board for a number of meetings and town meetings. We usually ask for 12,000, but considering we missed the spring and now we're into the fall, the board members asked to increase that to 25. What we're, the highway bounds are for a number of our subdivisions that went bankrupt. It's to put the landmarkers in there so they can properly survey people's property, knowing their, you know, front yard areas and, you know, what their lot lines are, be able to put, place a shed and things like that. This came about, I think Shady Noldes Estate, it was a property owner that came before us and said, you know, guys, my, you know, half my subdivision doesn't have bounds. We looked through it with, at the time, with the staff that we had on hand, ended up finding, I believe there was like six or seven subdivisions with missing bounds that were incomplete. So, and then the other article, the last one there, was brought before us regarding the use table change. Again, our use table and some of the things we've added, we haven't gone through in probably sitting down as a committee or joint committee to review things, to figure out what's, what needs to be changed or what's outdated. And that one came forward with us, with, again, a citizen stepping forward, asking for this change. Board felt that that was proper change to induce a business into that area. So, that's the cut and dry of these articles. Planning board voted unanimously to move these forward. This is a cut-down list of six articles. So, the one that we want to really, and just so you guys for, a little forward thinking is the accessory apartments. I think we'll pick that back up right after the annual, the fall town meeting because of the renewal process. And we've got a little bit of a split board back and forth, but I think it's just about putting articles before the people, of the townspeople, and figuring out what they want and what they want their town to look like. And the aggravation, I think, of some of the overhead that we deal with around the accessory apartments, so.
Les, are you here on behalf of the board?
Yep. Yeah, I got through the short straw on that one, so.
Can I ask you a question on one of them?
Yep.
4.3 lot frontage exemption?
Yep.
So, the area of said lot is at two times the required area for RA zone possibles?
Correct.
So, was it at 1.3 times and we're looking to change it to two?
So, the, it's funny, the RA is two times, but the VR was three times. So, the VR, which is what we're changing, the VR, it was three times the, of a lot. So, if you look at, it's roughly two acres on a RA.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you have the limited frontage, it would be then four acres, okay? In the VR zone, it should, you know, what we reviewed and discussed was, why is it so much different? If you've got, you're looking for some relief on the frontage?
On the multiplication, but the area of the village residential is 20,000, correct? So, it would be 60,000.
Correct. And so, we...
Just so, I just wanted to show these guys understand the same percentages.
Correct. So, it was initially 2X, 3X, which was 60,000. And then with our back...
From an acre and a half to an acre...
An acre.
An acre to an acre and a half. And village residential go from two acres to four acres in RA, right?
No.
20,000 square feet to 60,000.
Forty. Well, that's what it is currently.
Correct.
And we would go to 40,000, which is still meets all the Title V requirements. So, and then the V, the RA...
Trying to help them understand what it currently is.
Yeah. That's what it is. It's, but we looked at, looking at the town maps and looking at where these possible lot frontage exemptions would be used for a VR zone. And there's just a handful of them, if possible. And the 200 feet of setback, we don't even require that on a RA zone because it's a 50-foot setback really for the house. And then they need a little longer because of the driveway to be placed in the house and stuff like that. So, those were the thoughts. We spent a number of times with the town engineer at the time going through these, probably over three, four months, and tightened them up. They were all kind of ready in the January, December timeframe of this year before we had a staff change. So, things were actually progressing to try to bank it for the spring. And things got off the rails. And, you know, we're putting these forward to host a public hearing and a discussion on them and get them on the town warrant so the folks can vote up or down if they want these changes.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of thoughts. One is, I haven't had, I just received this thing, it came in Thursday. Haven't had enough time to make an informed decision or comment on this, haven't had a chance to look into it. But aside from that, we're hopefully going to be successful with our next candidate that we have in the planning role as a town planner, looking at the resume of that individual as a strong background in zoning review and rewriting, if maybe. I would think that unless there's a huge time crunch, I would think that we should at least go through that process and see if we have somebody else that's going to be in that capacity. My concern is, it seems like we constantly keep jumping to make a zoning change. We did it for the cowwash, which I don't see a cowwash there as of yet. I'm sure it can show up at some point. Talking about the restaurant rezoning that's in here is, he's talking about rezoning for the accessory apartments, and I think that...
That's not in here.
I think, I understand. Let's speak. I believe that's only for a timing thing. I had caught one of your meetings, it said three years, it was five years, something like that, you were changing that, the time limit on that. I would just, I would personally like a little more time to make sure that I could look at it and see, see what it is that I may be concerned with, that I could actually have some input into it and make a comment. I don't think I could make one in just looking through the stuff briefly to give a good solid comment.
We have a huge time crunch. Would this be able to make it to our next agenda and still be able to hit the warrant? Would, by our next meeting, give you sufficient time?
Yeah. Anything more than a day or two would be helpful.
Yeah, I think we have to open a public hearing, I think, at our next meeting or fairly soon, to be able to, there's a whole timing process and having enough runway to be able to do all these. And I get my...
In all fairness, you just made a statement that you had this ready in December, January, November, whatever, February, whatever it is. So, if you wait till the end of summer, it's...
No, no. No, I understand. It wasn't, again...
Lack of delay doesn't create an emergency.
Agreed. And it was just, just the staffing that we were dealing through and going through those processes, so.
I haven't seen, I've been on zoning for the last almost nine years, and I don't think we've seen anybody that's come forward that's addressed any of these issues that they get denied somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not, we're not looking, we're not looking...
Just making that point.
Yeah.
I don't like to rush into things, especially this is a long-lasting change that's going to stick with the town for quite some time until somebody else attempts to change it, whether or not it goes through. So, I would rather look at it properly and make good, sound judgment that's going to affect the town long-term.
We have time for both boards to be able to go through their runtime in order to make town meeting, right? If we just push by one meeting?
I think you would. You'd have to have your advertising requirements for public hearing, 14 days.
Yeah, I don't know if we meet twice.
They would have to have their hearing in time.
Yeah, I don't know if we meet twice.
Why is it urgent to be done in the fall? Is there any urgency to that? I'm just asking.
I know. The thing was, was that we were trying to put these in for the spring from, again, some situations that we dealt with. And the, trying to get the bids out there for the bounds to be able to do the subdivision so those can be done.
You can separate this out. If it's the bounds, the bounds are on almost every meeting, every town meeting that we have, or the fall town meeting, to put in, to put a bound. It didn't get put in last time for whatever reason, maybe it was overlooked. But you could separate the bounds out. It doesn't, this isn't an all or nothing thing, correct?
No. No, it was...
You could separate out the bounds. My whole point is poor planning gives you poor results. And if we do this properly, you can ultimately end up with something that could be...
That's an important question. What is the board's intent here? Is it a package of amendments? Or do you want each of these initiatives to be a separate?
They usually, you know, I mean, in the past with the moderator, usually packages them together for an all, all-together vote. The planning board, again, they'd cut them down.
He may, he may take multiple items on that and put them together, but he's the moderator that's putting them together in one.
The moderator taking them on a vote does, or packages them together. What the planning board just did was they looked at all these, again, vetted them through the staffing that was here and going through and making the changes. You know, we've got, addressed some things that we were looking to do in the spring, some of the things that are just toothache issues that we deal with and stuff like that, making it easier on the, on the public. So, that's what these articles are really, what we're driving towards, is just making things easier on the public, some things that we've dealt come, come before us where, you know, if you're familiar with the Caswell Court, you know, that applicant had a situation where they're in a VR zone, it had to be 200 feet back, even though, you know, they had to then seek a variance and pay the $800 and stuff like that in a VR zone, just didn't make sense to us.
Is that the one that just recently? Oh, sorry. I had a question. 4.3.7, going from 200 to 50?
Yeah, that's the, yep. That's because of the front setback. So, that is the same situation with Caswell Court that came before us, because the 200 feet back for that particular VR zone area, they only needed to go back 50 feet and then they opened up the space. They go back 200 feet, they're almost in their back property line.
That, wasn't that within the last, like, four months? Something like that?
No.
It was very recent, right?
No, it was, it was way before that. That's what triggered that. That would happen in October.
There was one that you just recently did that you guys gave them a real lot exemption. They had come to ZBA, they wanted to subdivide the lot. I don't remember the address. You remember the address of that one, Dan? Remember that?
I think it was 19, 19 Caswell, something like that, 24 Caswell, whatever.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure of the number. Yeah, there was, I don't think that's the same one.
You guys gave them, because we had suggested that they, they were trying to keep all the land behind their house, and they just couldn't subdivide it. You guys, they actually went from ZBA, they got denied at ZBA, went to planning board, and you guys gave them a real lot exemption, and they put the house where we had asked them if they would move it to them, so. I had a question, too. The explanation doesn't seem to make, the planning board, is the number of applicants use this bylaw section recently. Any board would like, oh, but you haven't made the change. I don't understand the sequel, yeah.
It was, it was just when we have applicants coming before us regarding this section, the section of the lot exemption. So, the, so what it is, is it's a reduced lot frontage exemption. That's what triggered us to look at the language, you know, in our review. We were like, okay, what other parcels would have the same situation? What other situations with this? And then it was trying to figure out, why is, you know, is, if you're a VR zone, you're 20,000, why would you have to do three times the area where if you're in the RA, you only have to do two times? So, that was a discussion point that we had. And then the other discussion point was the 200 feet back on a, on a VR area. It was almost impossible looking around at any other areas that would trigger that. And, you know, the, the whole thing was, was not having the applicant needed to go, you know, any additional steps or any additional back to the planning board, back and forth and stuff like that. It was really just trying to clean up, to say what was written there for VR really didn't allow anybody to, to do that without so many different hurdles to cross, so.
Couple of things is to answer your question that I think you'd ask is, I think each one of these is going to be an individualized warrant article.
Oh, it would have to be.
Yeah.
Because they're all in different policy...
Yeah, different areas.
Areas. So, it would, to be fair, the voters at town meeting, they need to know what their vote, and they may want one and not the other, and packaging would not be prudent with the two-thirds of the...
And correct me if I'm misunderstanding your, your position on it, Selectman Fitzpatrick, is that you're comfortable with the bounds article, but the rest of them, you'd like more time to review?
Well, to make it clear, I'm not comfortable with that fact that we're paying for these bounds, but my understanding is, is we're trying to correct past problems where developers went bankrupt, and you can correct me if I'm wrong or whatever. And we're just trying to get it, get the bounds in place. Hopefully, moving forward, the planning board is making some arrangements or some provisions to ensure the fact that taxpayers are no longer subsidizing the builders.
Establishing surety.
Surety.
You should make sure that the bounds are part of that surety. And when the road layout is presented to you to accept...
That the bounds are there.
Or to be referred to town meeting first and then for you to accept. You shouldn't accept anything until the work is complete that you have surety for.
So...
I think we did fix that. So, this problem's probably 15, 20 years old.
Correct. Yeah. And to the chair, you know, that's the thing is, it's helping the citizens of Douglas that live in these neighborhoods, being able to do proper surveying their property and things like that. That's the only reason why, you know, this came before from, from a person who lives in the neighborhood and said he was having problems putting up a fence and stuff like that. So, that's how they came before us. You know, I mean, it's citizens coming forward with certain issues and then boards taking action upon them and reviewing them. These weren't taken any, any lightly. These weren't taken any lightly. We still have debates on a few articles to do.
Well, I mean, they're going to be separate articles anyways, but we still have plenty of time to put the bounds on.
That was.
Sure.
That was my underlying thing is like, you wanted more time to review the rest of them and, you know, the one regarding the bounds is about the one that we feel okay about right now.
And Matt feels that the timing is fine, that we can just put it on the next meeting and we can just vote on the bounds.
You can. In the course of conversation, though, I'm troubled because I would like a professional planner to really parse this out. I can explain the reason why you were triple in VR and only double in RA, and it has to do with density and packing of traffic on roads. And VR, by definition, is in the village, and you may already have small roads at capacity, which is why you would have restricted the development of backland in the VR, not the RA, where you may have almost no density at all. I want somebody with the proper training to go through these proposals and show the upside and downside. I would like to have somebody in place, but let's say we hired somebody tomorrow and they gave their employer two weeks' notice. They'd have a day to look over this, familiarize themselves with the town of Douglas and give you some advice. So I'm not feeling the warm and fuzzy about.
I'm just overly concerned.
There are some things, the reason why I asked about, is it separate articles? Is there might be some that are timely to move forward, like bounds, and others that should be held for, I mean, May isn't that far away.
No, no. It's, yeah, I mean, when we had staff, you know, I mean, they went through and reviewed and stuff like that. So if we want to review it with new staff, again, there's nothing.
Maybe you can pick out a few things you think are priority that we need pushed after.
Well, I've been trying to get the accessory apartment thing going through because that thing's been just a, I don't know, Matt would, burdensome from the notification and the renewal process and the missing of renewals and stuff like that.
Is this accessory?
Accessory, yeah. You know, I mean, that's one. And there was another one we had to deal with, and I don't think we got to as well. So things like that. So that's all.
So the restaurant one, it appears that the EDC, ZBA should have a role and the planning board weighed in and said, no, it should be the planning board?
No, it's usually the planning board sponsors the articles.
Okay.
And I'd say 90% of articles related to the town's bylaws, if it changes, is usually sponsored by the planning board and carried forward.
The one benefit of doing it that way, Tim, is it gives the applicant a mechanism in which to appeal it locally versus going to court.
Yeah.
Even though I was thinking that it should be the other way originally until it was explained to me that way.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, you don't want to take away your local appeal process. If someone's sponsored or something's introduced that way, then you lose your local appeal process.
Why did you take out RA? Didn't we have this discussion about that?
What do you mean RA?
It's kind of going down a rabbit hole?
No, I'm just, yeah, that's why I stopped. I realized that maybe I'm going somewhere I'm not supposed to go.
I think it would probably be.
It really doesn't matter. I can go to a planning board meeting and ask that question.
Okay.
I thought we could propose a joint meeting with planning and get your questions addressed by the whole board. It's putting Mr. Stevens kind of on the spot as a single representative.
I don't know if I want to jump into necessarily get into an all night meeting.
All right, yeah.
I've witnessed some of their meetings and given them extra help could make it go longer.
Be early in a planning board meeting.
Yeah.
Only an hour in.
Yeah.
That's my thought anyways, is just to give a, have an opportunity to review it and potentially.
All right. So does anybody disagree with tabling five until the next meeting?
Joe? Do we want to, do we want to put the bounds, to vote on the bounds? Do we do it separately or can we split that up from what this is?
Bob, you had a.
Well, that's a financial thing, right? So that, we can put a placeholder.
Placeholder, right.
We should be in the habit of doing that so that people who attend fall town meeting expect to see it, and that's when that business would be taken care of. And it's a good thing to have, not end up with a spring warrant with, you know, 57 articles on it. So that should be timely and that should be done, frankly, if we can do it.
Yeah. Mr. Manerick.
Bob and Eric, economic development. Top five, there's two halves to that. There's the restaurant, which is commercial CP, but is already had a public hearing. The board looked at it about a month ago, went to the planning board for a public hearing, now it's on its way back, approved, and now it's before you to get onto a town warrant.
All right, and that's the restaurant one?
Yeah, it's the restaurant.
It's going to be the last one.
Fourth article there?
Put that one on. Could be handled the same way with a placeholder and just go with the next meeting or you want to vote on that?
Well, do you have any issues with doing the bounds in the restaurant and then placeholder the other?
I have no problem with that.
Does that, anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think it makes sense.
Just a, and I heard the local appeals, that makes sense to me, Bob, but can you speak to why EDC thought ZBA right away?
ZBA is in the book. It's already in the book. The planning board changed ZBA twice to planning board, and then the request was for village residential from an N to a, we recommended the zoning board, the planning board struck out the three CPs, special permit by zoning board, two special permit by planning.
Okay.
Same.
Their reason was they keep the field process in town.
The other thing with that is they would be done as like plan review, they can do it all at the same time.
One stop shop is the goal there. I mean, and still having local control. So that was, that was the whole goal. And when we, I think we went around and around on, because I think there was some other, you know, besides the restaurant, there was other article, other line items that, you know, would be reviewed in the future. I think once we get a planner. And I mean, I know we've been struggling for some staff help and stuff like that, and we're, hopefully we got a candidate this week that's worthwhile and go from there, you know? That's what's needed. At the end of the day, we've, I think our bylaws are 20 years, 25.
That's what the planning agents may be helpful.
No.
Age doesn't make it bad, right?
It's only in wine.
I don't know what he was implying.
Yeah.
Look at me. I don't know what he was going with that.
It's just, it's an outdated playbook, looking at it that way.
To keep the ball moving, we're looking at two out of the four being proposed today.
Yeah, we're okay with the, with the bounds in the restaurant one, and we're going to placeholder the other two.
Do we need a full vote on those two or just enough to came before us?
Why don't you vote so that?
Two separate votes.
Your warrant.
Yeah.
All right, well, let me just find the first one.
You got a waiver in the audience.
To clarify, one has had a public hearing already, the restaurant. The bounds needs to go back to the planning board for a public hearing.
I don't think it does. It's not a zoning change.
It's not money thing.
It's money.
No, no. Just goes before you guys.
Yeah.
And you guys with advertising before.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Manerick?
Anybody got a gag?
It doesn't work.
I would make a.
Acknowledge, Bob, or he's going to end up at your house out in the shrubs and you're going to hear him that way.
I would make a motion to inform Matt of this board's desire to see the highway bounds appropriation discussion and the zoning use regs, zoning bylaw, no correction, the restaurant. I'm going to call it the zoning bylaw, zoning use regs proposal beyond the next town meeting warrant.
You place it on the warrant.
Okay.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or clarification? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Excellent.
All right, appreciate your time. You want me back on the 19th or whenever, next meeting? When you guys meet, two weeks?
Yeah, in two weeks.
23rd.
She'll post it.
All right, all right. We'll play by ear. Perfect.
We'll have our people call you.
Good, thanks, guys.
All right.
All right. The next agenda item is the use of ARPA funds as mass works match not to exceed $950,000 in possible votes. I'm looking right at Mr. Manerick because I'm sure he's got a lot to say on this one.
Make it short.
I think Matt can speak here.
All right.
The, you're looking to me to be concise, that might be a mistake, but an abundance of words would be a mistake here. The town of Douglas has an active mass works application, and that process of weighing the various proposals is underway at the state level. The town received a phone call from the assistant secretary and his immediate direct And I'm not at liberty to go into every last detail, but I'll summarize as follows. There is no promise that the town of Douglas will get a grant. There was very clear indication that our existing grant application is too large and would not be approved in its format as presented because we blew through all the markers, right? So we're asking for a $12 million project with $8 million worth of grant funds. And the largest grant I think they've ever given is just a little bit more than $4 million. So we went back and following the advice and some of the guidance of the state officials that were on the phone call and with the help from Bob and from our, the Stantec engineer, Gina Britton, who's been walking point on this, we went back into the project description and matched ARPA eligibility requirements against the funding need for the project in order to follow the guidance of the state officials was that the town needed to put more resources into the application. So that's where we ended up with the correspondence that was in your packet, which was the town's recasting of its application to it to remove natural gas service explicitly from the grant discussion because ARPA funds cannot be used for natural gas. It can only be used for water and sewer in that the town's match would include ARPA funds and we would also be raising match funds from the private developers that are looking to develop. So we ended up with a very nearly, almost a 50/50 split with the state for an $8 million project. So that's, the repositioning of our grant application was strategic. Our intent has always been, I say our because I think the board received this recommendation positively, was to form a citizen committee to discuss how to spend the $2.7 million worth of ARPA funds the town will receive over the next two years from the federal government. The federal government, the legislation that created that funding mechanism restricted the use of ARPA funds to some very specific cones of eligibility. So it's not a carte blanche, here's $2.7 million, go therefore and grow the economy. That's not what it was. Water, sewer, water that is a project eligible under the Safe Drinking Water Act, sewer must be a project that would be eligible for funding under the Clean Water Act, expansion of broadband services, revenue replacement, and there's a whole documentation effort that you have to go through for revenue replacement, and something, something that I'm not going to remember, but that we're not eligible for, and our community isn't set up the way the urban areas are. So we still should have that citizen committee, but the mandate would be very narrow. You have the most flexibility around revenue replacement. So in some parts of the country, especially those places that were heavy tourist destinations that were devastated by the pandemic because nobody came and their businesses failed and they didn't raise any revenue. You go through a documentation process. Where do you think you would have been? What is the rational basis for that projection? And then you're allowed to take ARPA funds, put them back into your budget, and then spend them as general fund. We don't have very much of that. We might spend more time chasing pennies to document minimal revenue loss. Because at the end of the day, the one thing about being a purely residential economy almost entirely is that we didn't suffer that revenue loss that the major tourist and other commercial centers suffered. So there'll be some, and we'll go through the preliminary steps to see if there's a there there. But for the most part, we have to focus on water and sewer eligible projects. So that's a conversation we should engage with the public and with the water commission, the elected water commission, to see what their priorities are. We have a fair amount of infrastructure in town in the water and wastewater departments that is due for an upgrade and should be visited carefully in concert with the fire department because they are dependent upon public water in some parts of town for fire suppression resource. And it's not necessarily perfect at every last hydrant. So there may be, there's a there there in terms of what that conversation should be directed towards. The $950,000, which is a high number, so I'm building in a cushion for contingency, reflects that part of the project that's in our mass works application that is ARPA eligible. So of the almost $12 million, Stantec identified over $5 million that would be ARPA eligible. It's all the engineering that goes into the water project. This water project was the number one project in the ratings process from the capital committee two years ago. And that's to upgrade the water service down Gilboa Street because at one time when the Shell station was put in, somebody planned ahead and put in a big pipe. Problem is they connected that big pipe to a small pipe, and that's not really good practice. That entire pipe needs to be upgraded to the same size as that larger end. So we're not creating basically a water hammer at that end of town and then running that service into the other towns that are part of the Blackstone Valley Logistics Project on the other side of 146. Our grant application is faring well because we have a regional component. We have part of our project that helps both Sutton and Uxbridge as well as Douglas get a project done. So that's what the focus of this would be. Bear in mind, if our grant application is unsuccessful, you haven't spent that whole 950. What, so now I'm going to look at, we've spent 200?
225.
225.
100 to date.
For engineering. So that engineering, though, is resting at 90%, right?
The 225 will bring it to 100.
100% design. So those will be shovel ready plans for any grant application we would file or that we would work with, with a private sector partner if we don't get the grant. That's pretty much in a nutshell. It's a long nutshell, but.
It's a very big nutshell.
I don't, it's a really big grant. It's a really big opportunity.
So do you need us to, you want us to vote on this?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable obligating the town into this kind of six digits approaching seven digits. I mean, that's for you to do. It's grant funds, so technically they're spent without further appropriation, but the select would should.
At least vote on it.
Yeah.
A move that we use not to exceed $950,000 of ARPA funds as a mass works match.
Second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just in, for my own notification, the ARPA funds, does this board control those monies? Does any portion of it have to go to town meeting?
You should get a formal written opinion from council, but the way grant funds are always handled when they come from the feds under federal eligibility guidelines, they are spent by the departments typically without further appropriation from town meeting. Because it's not being raised and appropriated from the people, it's coming in from an outside source.
No, that makes sense. Correct.
Now, my view then, though, as the chief executive, the select board makes the decision.
Should be determined.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other discussion on this? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a potential new member for the EDC, Steve Grogan, not the former quarterback from the New England Patriots.
He should throw.
He's never heard that before.
Yeah, right.
Never.
Not a while.
I will say this, I do own two autographs, and one of them is Steve Grogan, so.
You got a third one?
Yeah, he's golden.
Are you good?
Good.
So I think we've been, he applied a while ago. I think we've just been trying to wait to get him onto the agenda.
Okay.
And I'm always happy to see any new member, any volunteer. Give us a little bit about your background and.
Well, I've lived in town for 22 years. A lot of growth. Haven't seen a lot of stuff happen. Nick and I get together, we throw ideas at each other a lot. You know, if I could make a little difference in town, I think that'd be great. I'm a nurse, I work at UMass Medical Center, I work at the OR. Been doing that for about 18 years now. Been a couple degrees.
Great.
Work well with people.
And you can throw a football 40 yards with a tight spiral. No.
I would make a motion to welcome Mr. Grogan to the EDC committee.
Second. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Tell your friends we got more opening for another.
Here it is.
Right.
We can stay or go, it's up to him.
Yeah. We're not used to an audience, but we're always happy to have one. You guys are welcome to stay.
I'll try. Because you don't have enough power?
I have no bars.
All right. I'll do it then. We're going to try to get town council on the phone because he asked to be part of this.
All right. It's like we're on a game show, calling your lifeline.
Hey Rich, you ready?
Yeah, right, amen.
I will.
Science, wonderful, technology, this is so exciting.
It's never a dull moment at our meetings. I think we need to go over the old one. I think we should just review the edits, like the new one.
Right. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right. Try and gain some time back.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Good night, guys.
Thank you again.
All right. This is crazy, but can you hear us? We're going to try to hear you.
I hear you.
Ah, it's pretty good, actually.
The esteemed town council, how are you, Mr. Ballen?
I'm doing fine, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, we are going to review and update the code of conduct for boards, commissions, and committees and possible votes. And we understand that you had asked to be part of this conversation.
Yeah.
So, my thought was, is Matt had sent out to us in our packets a list of proposed edits to our existing code of conduct for boards, commissions, and committees.
Mm-hmm.
I figured I would just review what the edits are and kind of go line by line and add any color legal commentary as needed. Was that your plan, Mr. Ballen?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right. So, all members of boards, commissions, and committees shall, a lot of the other things were crossed out. First item is be well-informed concerning the duties, responsibilities of their committee. Discuss or act upon those matters their committee is authorized to consider as defined in federal and state laws, town bylaws, and town policies.
Hard to argue with that.
Sample pie and motherhood.
All right. Number two, make decisions only after all the facts and analysis have been performed and presented and discussed. Acknowledge and respect all lawful majority decisions of the committee once they are made.
Once made, yeah.
Yep, that sounds good.
Item three is completely struck off of the previous. So the, so the new three, formerly four. Conduct themselves in a professional and dignified manner, refraining from any activity that would reflect negatively on the town and its processes. Members shall acknowledge in writing at the time of appointment that the use of profane language, racial, ethnic, or religious slurs, or the display of offensive materials or symbols while in a meeting of the committee shall be grounds for corrective action up to and including removal from office by the appointing authority.
Well, I think as an aspiration, that's a good thing. I can imagine a case where someone makes the claim that displaying that kind of symbol or using that kind of language is protected speech. But I guess what it suggests is go with the language. But if you get to a point where you actually want to take some sort of enforcement action, that at that point, rather than trying to, you know, micromanage the clause now, look at the particular set of facts at the time.
Makes sense.
And make a decision then as to what's appropriate. I just don't think you can wordsmith if in every way that will make it survivable. But at the same time, it's kind of hard to say that you shouldn't have some sort of policy that discourages, you know, commonly acknowledged offensive behavior.
All right. So we're just going to kind of, your advice is to run with three with kind of an asterisk?
Yes. And then if something comes up, we make a decision at the time on the facts as to whether three should be invoked.
We'll go to item number four. Not use their committee position for financial or political gain. Committee members shall not use their position to influence other committees or town staff to make decisions to which they are not otherwise entitled, either through any form of intimidation or promised benefit.
If I might, I have a problem with the political gain. Somebody putting down that they serve on a board on their campaign literature should be permissible, but it sounds like that could be covered by that. So if you're on the planning board and you're running for board of selectmen, you put maybe on your selectman literature that you're on the planning board or have been on the planning board. I don't see any problem with that, but it might be brought in to that political gain.
Hmm. So...
It is.
One could do so.
And I think we don't want to discourage people from putting that in their resume if they're running for office.
And that's not the intent. The intent is to prevent people from using the opportunity to appear on video to have campaign button while they're, I'm not looking at you anymore. But that's typically where we try to draw the line, right? So you are at a meeting, you're conducting public business. It may be, the mission may be very specific. It may be zoning in its land use, and you're running for a policy position on the select board. The display of campaign material while you're in a public meeting is like, it's a running and, now, listen, how many people watch the meetings? All right, we're not going to go there. That's not the, it's what you're trying to do.
But the language is broader.
The language is broader than that.
Yeah. I share how it's reservation about political gain. You know, I know we all tend to use the word politics as a dirty word, but, you know, the essential form of government is a political system. So, I think it's too broad.
Just strike political gain out. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The, all these code of conducts, that's up to the discretion of the appointing authority to whether or not they want any disciplinary or removal action. Is that correct? So, that's when the logic would come in as far as the political connection to it. But you shouldn't chill the free speech of somebody wanting to list something on there. I just think it's political, I would say take it out, political gain. What's political gain, getting elected to an office or getting appointed? I don't see anything other than that.
You know, and if you do a good job in your office, it usually is political gain. You become more popular, you can get elected to another position. It's, it's, I understand what it's trying to get at, but I just don't think it can be gutted in this way.
So we can leave financial and just strike political?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right out of the conflict of interest law.
Anybody have any issues with that?
No, that's good.
Okay. So, we're on to number five, formerly number six. Comply with ethics, open meetings, and access to public records laws established by the state. Committee members shall upon appointment and annually thereafter complete online code of conflict, online conflict of interest training provided by the Ethics Commission and submit proof of completion to the town clerk. Members shall be subject to corrective action up to and including removal from office for failure to comply with the ethics laws or the training requirement. I don't think there's anything wrong with that one.
No.
That's a statement of law.
I wouldn't specify online if I had to write this again, any training opportunity. So we could get somebody from the Ethics Commission to come to Douglas and train many board members in one meeting, for those who especially don't want to do it online.
Comply with the ethics law, well, the training, do you want to put any?
The training is what gets you the awareness of what you're supposed to do. And I think you've been through it recently to be on this board. So it was what, 45 minutes?
Yeah. Recently. I have to do ethics...
Separation loyalty. Just a point, Mr. Chairman, in number three and in number five, you have the corrective action in there. Number four, you don't. It does not necessarily have that repetitive throughout the whole thing. Is it just assumed that it would be a corrective action? If you didn't comply with any of these steps?
Yeah.
Or these code of conduct items?
I think so. It's implied that corrective action will be taken.
You could put it at the end as a blanket that comes...
Well, because I see it, it just, it skips every other one, so it just, is it opening up an argument?
Yeah, have a separate enforcement section.
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense. The next item is not make statements or promises of how he or she will vote on matters that will come before their committee, before all sides of the issue have been heard during a public meeting of that board or committee. Makes sense.
I think you've got a free speech issue on that one, too. The, now granted, it's the best practice to sit and wait to hear the evidence before your past judgment. It's that, really, that's the only good practice. But there are circumstances where, say, a developer is coming in for something that's controversial in the community. It's going to be pretty hard to have officials biting their tongue when the public is looking for some sense of direction. So, it's, it's a complicated one. I think it's probably best left out because it will create problems. And ultimately, if an official prejudges something in an inappropriate, in an inappropriate manner, that may well result in the reversal of a decision by court.
All right.
I think that's your remedy.
Let's take that one out. So the recommendation is to strike that item?
Yes.
I thought too.
All right. Next is to treat all members of the committee and town staff and the public respectfully despite of differences of opinion.
Apple pie and motherhood.
Exactly.
Just apply to everybody.
Except for you. All right. Never...
It's an exception to every rule.
There. Never publicly criticize an employee of the town. Concerns about staff performance that affect the committee in the performance of its mission must be discussed in executive session and voted to be brought to the town administrator in formal written communication or similarly to the superintendent of school for the school department's staff. That's fair.
It does, I do think maybe there should be a catch-all in case there's a concern regarding the town administrator or the superintendent of the schools, that there be an elected body or leaders that they can go to should that person not be comfortable connecting with...
Isn't that already in place, something?
Yeah, if it was an issue with the town administrator, they'd come to us. And if it was an issue with the superintendent, they'd go to the school committee.
Well, I would know that, but if I'm relatively new on a board and I wanted to file a complaint or start a discussion, that's fine. I'm not going to argue too much about it. I just thought that it'd be put in writing that we, at the end of the day, be available to people that may have a complaint.
No, that's, I mean, if you're sitting on a board or committee, I think that you'd probably want to start the process by bringing into the chairman of that board. And then, that issue would then go to the chairman of the appointing, you know, or the whole board of the appointing authority. And then kind of go from there, like, kind of chain of command thing. Maybe we can write something like that out.
Yeah, I mean, originally, the way this was written, it included a escape hatch that I didn't think was necessary. The superintendent and the town administrator are both evaluated publicly as a matter of law.
Ah.
So, there really isn't, you're not going to be cutting off access for that evaluation process for your two chief administrators. This is about the boards and committees and how they conduct their activities.
You could use a lot of the policies and procedures besides.
That kind of makes sense.
All right.
Rich?
I know what is being sought here. And I think I might come at it a little bit differently, which is something like this, where there, where there is a concern about the conduct or the performance of a public employee, an official shall refrain from public criticism and instead shall refer the complaint to the town administrator or school superintendent for appropriate personnel action.
Makes sense.
Yeah, there's a square trying to circle, or a circle we're trying to square.
Which is what if it's the superintendent or administrator?
You may have a member, a board with seven members on it.
Yeah.
And six people are perfectly happy with the staff support that supports their operation. But you got one person who just has a bee in their bonnet and grabs a microphone every time they have a chance and hammers the town engineer. Just hammers the guy. Every time he comes to a meeting. Or he doesn't come to a meeting. It starts to look like, when, when a board has an opinion, it should express that opinion as a body. So, if you go into executive session, there's that conversation and you have to invite the person, by the way, it's an open meetings requirement, that if you have an executive session, you have to invite the person that you're talking about to have a conversation with you. Which they can decline, by the way. But you're giving a, you're making it so that one member isn't running away with the prestige of the board and casting their relationship with staff in a negative light because that's what they want to do for whatever reason. While the rest of the board, it's a lot harder to drag compliments out of people than it is to drag complaints. So the rest of the board may be perfectly happy with the site plan review notes or whatever the town engineer takes, right? That's what I'm trying to protect against is this notion that meetings turn to ambush for anybody who's trying to take, make recommendations on policy matters with a small minority of the board.
You can come back and revisit them. I mean, it's not terrible as it's written.
No.
And now they understand the, I think we get the intent.
A lot of the language here wasn't changed. This is, a lot of the language is from your current policy, so...
Yeah. It may have, the lens in which I was looking at this may, for that particular one in my notes, may have been thinking more of personnel than necessarily a board member. So I'm, yeah, I totally get it. The board itself would act as the body and the individual opinion would be heard, but... The board itself would act as the body and the individual opinion would be heard, but ultimately, it's, I think it's probably fine as is.
Moving on.
The other ones are struck.
Yeah, the parts that are struck, I'm kind of omitting out just what's still there. Number nine is comply with the town of Douglas social media policy as amended from time to time.
I must admit, I don't...
Where is that posted?
No, not you.
Town website.
Is the social media policy on our website?
It would be in your key policy section of the select board's webpage. And it's in, I believe it's in the personnel policies and procedures document. It does need to be updated.
People will be able to find it, that's all.
Yeah, it's in the policy manual.
It's on our Facebook page.
Yeah, I think there's nothing wrong with that. Of course, the devil will be in the detail of the actual social media policy, but that's a different discussion.
Right. All right, are we good on the social media side of it?
Are you good on that?
I am perfectly content with it.
You're a social media expert.
Motion to adjourn.
You got a little warm over there.
My seat just got hot. If serving as the chair of a committee, maintain decorum at all times during public meetings, enforcement of this code of conduct and procedural rules of order to allow for the effectiveness and efficient work of the committee. Committees shall not meet for more than two hours or past the hour of 10 o'clock PM, whichever comes first, without a motion and a vote on the record to extend the meeting beyond those limits.
So if I can advocate for something, this is like the one good thing I learned in Tiburon in Rhode Island, is you are violating open meetings in spirit, maybe not in letter, but in spirit, if you drag something on for so long that nobody's listening anymore. And it's the wee hours of the night, people aren't thinking clearly, the board's not being effective, people are talking over each other, and the wheels fall off. And it happens everywhere. It's a human, part of the human condition. Once a meeting gets to be, and we're getting there now, close to two hours long, you're starting to run out of bandwidth. You can go right ahead, the way this is written, go right ahead and have a long meeting, just take a vote that says you're consciously recognizing that you need to continue.
We do actually do it and done that at town meetings.
Well, it's in your town meeting bylaw, I believe, that you can't go past a certain time, just putting the same rule to the boards and commissions. Personally, I just hold in very low esteem meetings that go on for three, four hours. Something isn't right about the way that meeting is being conducted, and especially if you're at the end of the agenda and you've got, it's land use, so your rights as a landowner are going to be decided by this board. And then you decide, you know, it's, you know, quarter of 11.
They want to get to the Red Sox games.
And then you've got to work the next day. We've got to remember that people have lives, especially the volunteers on our boards and commissions. Maybe a group of people on a board that want to keep going, but everybody else is like, ah, I put the kids on the bus at 6:30, let's go. And you just have to have a conscious stop. What are we doing here? It's very rare, I have, I've heard it, you hear it all the time at town meeting, I don't think I've ever heard it, maybe at one select board meeting where somebody actually raised their head and said, I moved the previous question. It's just not something that's common in Douglas, to cut off debate and proceed to a vote immediately.
I've heard it a couple of times here.
21 to 11?
Yes, we may. Candidates seeking appointment shall review and sign written copy of this code of conduct prior to being considered for appointment as part of the application process and shall be bound to this code of conduct for the duration of their term if appointed. I like that one.
Seems to make sense if we're doing that.
The only thing that I would like to do is include the current members. It's not said that in there. This is prior to appointment, seeking appointment, so.
I don't know if you can do it retroactively.
It's a little hard.
Yeah.
The notion is that there may be some people who don't want to work in this environment. You know, they want to come and just run at the mouth, and they'll want to sign. When their, when their term comes up, they can make that decision, whether they want to be reappointed or not and sign this. But the code wasn't in place when they were appointed, so to hold them to a code that is different than the one that was in place when they were appointed after the fact, it's not really fair.
Not really fair.
Well, yes, it is done, moving forward to today, from today on. So, well, how's Rich feel about that?
Richard, they're calling on you. It's a Socratic method.
Give me the question again.
That's the oldest law school trick ever. Can you repeat the question?
Some people in back of me didn't hear it.
Somebody back of me is going to hand me a note with the answer.
The question is, the way that this code of conduct is written is for new people looking to be appointed and take office on any one of these boards or committees.
Or reappointed.
Or reappointed. Well, actually, that part was kind of Matt explained.
Yeah.
So for the existing members that are currently sitting on these boards, Mike wants to know how we can implement that out to the existing members as a code of conduct change, or do we have to wait until they're up for reappointment to expect them to be held to these rules?
I think you have to wait till it's up for reappointment for the existing people.
You have to add that language so that it's just reappointment's not in the language.
But I put reappointment in it, too.
And that is, that is all of them, which we have, I think Matt's been taking copious notes on.
Edit.
With the...
That's for you, Rich.
Low fuel indicator. Get some gas, Rich.
Well...
All right, so we've reviewed...
Can we tell me why Rich comes?
We need him for the next one, too.
Are you going to stay with us, Rich? Are you going to, you want us to call you back for executive session?
Yeah, why don't you call me back?
We need him for the next one.
For the next one?
Discuss remote meetings with chairs and legal counsel.
Oh, all right. Rich, you can't go anywhere.
Oh, all right.
Kevin insisted, just to put a record.
I insisted because it says discuss remote meeting with chairs and legal counsel. I let, you're still legal counsel, right, Rich?
Last time I checked, yeah.
Oh, okay, then. All right, so we're back to the never-ending discussion on remote meetings and remote participation in meetings for boards and committees. And we kind of keep running into, the state has put out their own form of guidance on some of this, like case in point, the school committee is continuing to meet remotely. They'd gotten an opinion from the attorney general's office that said that we do not have the authority to tell them that they cannot use remote participation.
Then what's the point to talk about it?
Well, I think the situation we're dealing with on that one is ordinarily, under the pre-COVID regulations, we have a lot more power to dictate to other boards, and in fact, which boards can meet remotely. So prior to the governor's first declaration, we could have said, well, selectmen can do it, but, you know, pick another board. They can't. But when the governor adopted the COVID order and then renewed it in June, he specified that all boards could participate in the remote system. Now, once that order expires, we go back to the old system, where only those boards that you approve can participate. But as long as the governor's order remains in effect, everybody can do it.
Yeah, if you want, I can read off to you what she had sent. Says, "After further consideration and review of both the Attorney General's open meeting law regulations and the new legislation regarding remote meetings, we believe that a public body such as a select board does not have the authority at this time to prohibit the use of remote participation by other public bodies. Because, because public bodies are not required to adopt remote participation before utilizing it, Sections 940 CMR 29-103 and 29-108, which allows entities to restrict the use of remote participation, are not applicable at this time."
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I was saying. The key words in that discussion are "at this time." And what that phrase "at this time" means is during the duration of the governor's COVID order.
So with that being said, I guess, in my mind, it makes sense, we just tabled this until the COVID order comes to an end.
Yeah, one, one thing that Rich said was the boards or committees that we decide. Matt had told us before, it's all or nothing, for us, whenever we did, it was either all or nothing. So is it all or nothing, Rich?
I was forwarding Rich Bowen's opinion.
Yeah, is it all or nothing, Rich? Or can we allow, because we have certain boards, like the library trustee, the Oktoberfest committee, different committees like that that don't have any public input, and they would prefer to meet remotely if they could. Can you split it up and have some meet and some not meet?
You know, I've been giving some thought to that particular issue, and some of the most recent writing on that from the Attorney General seems to suggest that we can designate which boards can meet remotely and which can't, I mean, setting aside the COVID order. So...
Can we leave it up to the discretion of the chairs?
Well, you could adopt a policy that conferred that kind of discretion, sure.
Okay. I think we should consider waiting, doing anything until COVID, and let, let the boards do that, then we'll have more experiences to whether or not we want to continue it once the...
But allow them to do remote and...
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So right now, we could do it at the discretion of the chair and then see how it works if it's working.
Yeah, and that will have more evidence to see if we want to continue it once that's over.
What are your thoughts, Matt?
I'm so beaten down over this issue, and so many people who are providing guidance have reversed prior guidance that I just don't want to fight it anymore. It's, the modern world, these people have video conference, and why fight change?
My argument is still the same, the difficulties that we run into with, with the zoning board, for one, just being able to have clear information and making good, good judgments, still the same. However, it's, if it's all...
I think you're going to, I think you're really concerning yourselves with something that's going to be a short-term issue, because once the governor's order expires, and, gosh, the expiration date is, I, I don't remember, it's something like January of 2022. But in any event, it's, it's not far away. Once that order expires, we're back to the, the old setup. So, you know, I, I would prefer that, you know, we reflect on the lessons that we've learned, and then when the COVID, the emergency order is gone, we come back at it and fine-tune what we've got.
Makes, I mean, in the interim, considering that's out there.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just let the other boards and committees know that according to the governor's order, they are still allowed to do remote participation, and that there'll be a formal policy coming from the board of selectmen at a later date.
Yeah. To the, to the discretion of the chair, or just?
Yeah.
Yeah, just up to the chair. Because the chair is responsible for keeping the, the meeting process in check, so I would think that it would go through them.
Does that work for any of the chairman that are here? Does that work for you, Shirley?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
Excuse me, I, I think we need to look even further, maybe later on, because sometimes when meetings are held and people are not up to par, and weather is bad, but they really like participating in this changing world, might want to consider something.
I worked for a technology company, I've been an advocate for remote meetings for a while, it's just, it depends really on the board that's meeting. Like Mike's brought up some great points.
Yeah.
If, if you have members on a board that don't have the technology to actually, like, do screen share or document sharing and things like that, remote participation can actually be a hindrance, so.
So this will be a fact gathering period?
Yeah.
And in the interim, then, anybody want to make a motion?
Takes the pressure off the whole situation until January, until January.
And I also think it recognizes some of the feedback that we've received so far, which is that frankly, some of the volunteers, you know, prefer it, so.
You're good.
You're good?
Anybody want to make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion that we abstain from any blanket policy adopted by the board of selectmen restricting the use of remote meetings.
Remote participation.
Remote participation.
You want to put that at the discretion of the chairs?
I thought I said that, at the discretion of the chair.
Okay. Does that work? Motion's been made and seconded? Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Lisa, we'll have it on the agenda again so we can reverse our decision and then reverse it again.
Can we do that remotely?
We can. We're going to dial, all of us are going to call in remotely and reverse this.
Simultaneously.
Roll call vote. All right, Rich, we're going to let you go, so we move on to our rest of our agenda.
Thanks, Rich.
So I will wait for your call.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, thanks, guys.
I will make a motion that we approve the August 24, 2021 minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded? Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will also make a motion to approve the executive session minutes for August 24, 2021, and retain those minutes.
Second.
All right, made and seconded? Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
I'm going to blast through it quickly. Earlier, we had a conversation about 9/11, and it is the 20th anniversary this year. On the municipal level, we respect those who died that day by implementing the lessons we learned from that crisis and from Hurricane Katrina, and locally from the station nightclub fire in Rhode Island with respect to emergency response, and the premium value on communication and organization. We all have sympathy for those who lost people that they loved or that they knew, and we should remember that. We should also remember that that's the reason why we, I'll get in my soapbox for five seconds, you can shoot me if you want to, but America can't shrink from its role in the world. And we send people in harm's way to protect a form of civilization that provides for due process and equal rights and a lot of things that we believe in. And there are people who don't like that. And they tried to hurt us that day, they tried to undermine the core of our existence. And we should take that lesson and just come back stronger every time somebody tries to hurt us as a country. Superpowers need to be resilient. And part of what we learned was, when we got people running around at a horrible scene, we have to make sure they have the tools they need to do their job, which is what we try to strive at municipal government. Secondly, COVID, we're at or about, because it changes every day, about 18 active cases in town that are reported, which is, that's actually back at our surge levels. Again, family groups, couple of large families, couple of large social groups that have been very busy with COVID over the past couple of weeks, we haven't had any deaths, but it is still a real thing for, especially for those who expose themselves to risk factors. Right now, we're not anticipating any policy change with how we're responding to it.
Right now, we're not anticipating any policy change with how we're responding to it. We're still doing screeners, screening questions when calls come in to dispatch for medical assistance. We are investing CARES Act funds, because they are still valid through December 31st, for personal protective equipment, which we've distributed to the library and the senior center, and I'm waiting to hear from the schools, I know that they need some, some blah, supplies over there, that I have in inventory that have already been purchased with CARES Act funds.
What's the definition of an active case, both the feds are reporting, is it somebody that, if somebody tested positive but no symptoms, is that considered an active case?
I think that's the way we're dealing with it. So it's a confirmed, approved test format, which is no longer just the PCR test. I think you can do a rapid test with Binax, and, but that's a confirmed case that goes into the database.
Regardless of whether it's symptoms, regardless of whether or not.
Correct.
Oxalize, et cetera, okay.
I wanted to touch on the success and then talk about what next steps will be. The town applied for an assistance of firefighters grant, which is a federal program for a brush truck. A brush truck that was in fact on the capital plan for the fire department. May not have been the highest priority, but it was on the plan. And no kidding, the existing truck is 49 years old. So it doesn't hurt to have it on the capital plan. We don't take things out of order because we want to. The way grants work is you apply to the grant-making authority for what they make available for the purpose that they designate. And if it appears in your plan at some point, it is actually, in my opinion, dereliction of duty not to apply for that grant.
Yeah.
So you may accelerate this or that purchase into a closer timeframe, because frankly, somebody's giving you money, and that's why you do it. It's a shame that not everybody understands that, but that's the way it is. The cap on a brush truck is a quarter of a million dollars. They won't award you more than that. And then, of course, there's a, there's a 95-5 split on, on the funding of it. So the actual grant is, I'm not going to round out to the hundreds of dollars, it's $238, bless you.
Thank you.
And we're in the process now of pricing out the exact spec that the fire department wants on the brush truck. Brush trucks are very, they're plug and play. You can put a lot of different things on a brush truck, and it's up to the chief, assistant chief in the department to spec the product that they want to buy. When we get to a certain point, we may have to add things as add alternates and see where we get in the bidding process. It's a chicken or egg, right? It's unlawful for the procurement officer to go out for a procurement if the funds are not all secured for the purchase. So even though we have the majority of it, the grant, until we know that town meeting approves anything additional, I really can't go out. So we're going to have to figure out how, a graceful estimate quote process from a couple of vendors to get a ballpark figure and then ask town meeting for the appropriate amount of money. And we're going to have to do that on the November warrant. So that's the plan.
There's a placeholder for that?
There is a placeholder for that. We do have a candidate for director of community development that we'll be interviewing tomorrow. And I'm hopeful the candidate meets all the minimum requirements, but we're not going to precast the result of the interview. We're following the same interview process that we did last time, the chairs, and in some cases, vice chairs of relevant committees that will work with the department head, as well as the staff that work in that office, participate in the interview process. And I'm not looking for unanimity, but we are looking for as strong consensus as we can get. Be mindful of the select board's specific instructions to the town administrator were not to recruit specifically only engineers. In this case, the candidate does not have a degree in engineering, but has a wealth of experience in planning and a lot of the technical aspects of running a planning department, and has experience running a planning department. So we won't let the perfect get in the way.
The enemy here.
The enemy of the good. Just a quick conversation about town meeting and where we're headed. My goal is to have a fairly comprehensive update for FinCom on the 14th of September. But as we approach the fall, the financial condition of the town appears to be very robust, and that's good news for everyone. Our turnback from the departments is strong. We were very conservative in our projections in the budget for revenues, and we have exceeded those revenue projections. Some of that is one-time, so we sold a piece of property on Webster Street, no kidding, that's not going to be replicated year after year, it's a one-time event. We are on a trend with the building industry is very strong. So we have a lot of permit fees that have come in that were well over anticipated levels. And then lastly, new growth is very strong. So new growth was certified at $345,000, which is a very significant impact to the budget, not only this year, but going forward, because that's added to your levy projection for next year. So you have more flexibility in looking towards your future than you've had in quite a long time, and it's a good thing. But it's also, it becomes more intense conversations about how to, the resources are still scarce, and you still have needs. So you're not out of the woods, you know, Douglas is not Newton, but you are, are in a much better position and you have some flexibility to do some things. And we'll have to have a conversation and build consensus from the finance director and myself and the select board and FinCom and town meeting on what you want to prioritize. What I hear people talk about a lot is roads, and I think we need a long-term solution for funding a roadway improvement and maintenance program that demonstrates real value to the taxpayer who's supplying a lot of these funds. So we're going to try to come up with some creative solutions for adoption at spring town meeting, not the fall. That's all I have for a report right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
I have, I have one, just a shout-out to the highway department, which completely rehabilitated a collapsed culvert right in front of my house on Orange Street. I'm just amazed at how efficiently they did that, and I would have thought maybe they needed a private contractor, but they had all the skills in-house to do that. It's, they did a great job, and we definitely get our, our money's value from the highway department, Public Works.
You're here.
It's our firsthand experience what they did.
Did they provide a boat for you to go do the little fishing?
It wasn't, no.
So you're specializing in good mudders, are you now?
Good, yeah.
I agree with you, they do a, a great job. I saw them actually pull down to, down your street, shortly thereafter, with tools and dirt, things in tow.
Yeah.
Yep. And I'm sure you weren't the only one. All right. Mr. Chairman, given the nine o'clock hour, I would make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of litigation and investigation, and to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Boy, was that smooth.
That was a good one.
Yeah. It's worth hearing again.
You get one a week.
You see, goosebumps.
One a week.
Second.
Motion has been eloquently made and seconded.
And it was much better than the rendition that Kevin came up with when you were in here.
Oh, God, yeah. Yeah, that's late years ahead of mine.
We're in an age of specialization.
You're making me blush.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
It's Patrick, aye.
Bowen, aye.
Morris, aye.
Dave, aye.